Okay, the time is now five fifty-one. First, good evening and I want to apologize to anyone who is, who's joined us. We, we had a, had a, a, a late start for various reasons. We know that life doesn't work out perfectly, so we apologize for being late. But I do want to welcome you to the November twelfth, two thousand twenty-four Policy and Governance Committee Meeting. I'm Jonathan Briggs, Chair of the Committee and District Two Board Member. So I want to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting. Ms. Adley, please call the roll.
Mr. Briggs?
Present.
Dr. Miller?
Present.
Ms. Walker?
Present.
Ms. Buddha Strather? Mr. Jackson? Three present, we have a call.
All right, with the call in present, the Policy and Governance Committee Meeting will come to order. We're going to move on to item one point three, Adoption of the Meeting Agenda. Please be advised that to accommodate our visiting speakers, the order of the gen, the agenda will vary slightly. So Agenda Item four point five, Policy thirty-three twenty-three Purchasing will be considered first under Agenda Category four point O. So if there are no objections, the committee shall adopt the November twelfth, two thousand twenty-four Meeting Agenda as amended. Great, there being no objections, the November twelfth, two thousand twenty-four Meeting Agenda is adopted as amended. Now moving on to item one point four, Approval of the Meeting Minutes. If there are no corrections, the committee shall approve the October twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four Meeting Minutes as distributed. There being no objections, the October twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four Meeting Minutes are approved. Now going to move on to Item two point O, Public Comments on Agenda Items. So Registered Public Comment Speakers can be live, pre-recorded using video, audio, or written. Tonight, there are no public comment speakers, but we do always welcome the public to provide insights on the impacts of policies or your insights on changes that we're making. And of course, we will, we will take those pieces of advice under consideration. So we're now going to move on to Item three point O Legislative Update, which there are none, but there will be some very soon. So we are happy to move past this piece for now because we will likely have very long meetings. So moving on to Item four point O Policies for First Consideration. There are seven items for discussion. We'll have two rounds per discussion. As I mentioned, we're going to start with Policy thirty-three twenty-three Purchasing. So I want to recognize Mrs. Welsh to introduce her presenters and provide an overview of Policy thirty-three twenty-three Purchasing.
Good evening. We're fortunate this evening to have our Chief Financial Officer Lisa Howe, as well as our Director of Purchasing, Dan Erica Johnson here for this evening to provide a presentation, a training, basically, that was requested by this committee on the whole purchasing process and procurement. From there, after we do the training, then we can go into the policy to discuss it and then answer any questions you may have about the policy. So I will let Ms. Ms. Johnson and move forward.
All right, well, good evening, everyone. It is such an honor to be able to present to all of you all here that are board members, board chairs, and, and committee chairs. And so we want to get in, get in and get started because I know that you all have a very robust agenda. But I wanted to take some time to give you all just a procurement overview of what we do in purchasing and procurement. And you'll hear me say purchasing and you'll also hear me say procurement. And I think that those words are interchangeable because I think that we have elevated from the word purchasing and now we're doing procurements. But however, that is still our legal title and what some people in the industry still refer us as. So we will go through some of these topics. We'll talk about, we're going to go really brief over our mission because you all should know what our mission is in purchasing and supply services, doing business with PGCPs, understanding the procurements, PGCPs' roles and responsibilities, purchasing authorities, thresholds, threshold requirements. We're going to talk about the procurement process. We're going to give you a snapshot of FY twenty-four procurements and then also just some restricted purchases. We're going to have just a couple of questions and then we can move into the BP thirty-three twenty-three. And so we have our mission, which is purchasing and supply services is to facilitate timely delivery of goods and services to the district instruction and non-instructional departments to build a foundation for life learning by procuring the highest quality of goods and services at competitive prices while exercising proper financial stewardship of taxpayer dollars. And so what does, you know, what does that really mean and how do we do that? And so we do that because we actually follow the COMAR rules and we also follow the Board Policy thirty-three twenty-five. We also try to ensure that we have maximum feasibility in competition and that we also have fairness, integrity, impartiality, transparency, and that we are compliant with the board policies, which are the ethics regulations, code of conduct, and conflict of interest. And so I'm going to go to the next slide where it talks about understanding procurement. You know, what is it that, you know, what we really do? And so we acquire goods and services. And we do that by contracting, you know, issuing contracts. We have different vehicles that we can issue contracts. And I'm sure that some of you are familiar with some of those contract vehicles in which we use, which are IFBs, RFPs, sole source, emergencies, all of those things, rider contracts, all of those of the like. When a need is brought to purchasing, we would actually assess the need and try to figure out what is that contract vehicle that would best suit that particular need with that particular department and with, and to make sure that we complete a competitive process. And we also make sure that these vendors are paid with the help of the BMS team. And then we also issue purchase orders also. And that we try to make sure that we're engaged in all of the purchasing activities, you know, to the level that we can. Definitely when we have bad actors in some of our contract awardees. This particular slide, when we talk about the roles and responsibilities, really kind of lays out the roles and responsibilities of the Board of Education, the Superintendent, and then the Director of Purchasing and Supply Services. So the Board of Education, they will approve instructional material and supply contracts above one million dollars. Also, in structural and staff development, five thousand dollars and above, professional services contract, five thousand dollars, I mean, two thousand five hundred dollars and above. They would also approve contracts that are awarded to other than the lowest bidder. And so you all have heard about the IFB process where we know that the services or the, or the items in which we're purchasing are very standard and that is just a matter of price. And so then we would award to the lowest bidder. If there's a time where we cannot award to the lowest bidder, then those are the types of contracts that will go to the board prior to the execution of the contract.
Ms. Johnson, can I just interrupt really quick?
Yes.
Okay, I think you might be frozen on my screen, but if you can just clear what IFB means. I know what the other one, other means to me, I'd be helpful just for everyone who's listening to just kind of plainly say it.
Okay, thank you. So an IFB is an invitation for bid. And so with that one, that is the one that we, that we price is where our determining factor is. A lot of times, like if you're buying a book, you know, the books are the same. It's just a matter of who you can get the book from the cheapest. And so that's when we use the IFB process. And if we cannot award to the lowest responsive, responsible bidder, then we would actually bring that to the board before it is actually executed. When we had an, an RFP, which is a request for proposal, we actually will, we try to award to the highest technical offerer. I do see, I thought that I had changed this, but just because we have the highest technical, it doesn't equate to the lowest price responsible and responsive bidder. And that is one of the things that we have indicated in BP thirty-three twenty-three that we definitely want to, to monitor, I mean, to change. And that is just because we have the highest technical, it doesn't equate to the lowest bidder because there are a lot of factors that are in place when we are looking for an RFP. We also, the board also approves firm fixed contracts modifications over fifty thousand dollars. That would be something that will go to the board prior to execution. And then also time and material contracts that are above a hundred thousand dollars. Those are the things that would be taken to the board with the exception of anything else that we kind of feel like needs the attention, you know, or needs to be, be raised to the level of needing our board to actually weigh in on it. The Superintendent, you all have granted the authority of the Superintendent to run some of the day-to-day operations. And so the Superintendent approves all real estate leases and transactions. He also approves all of our MOUs, which are Memorandums of Understanding. The Superintendent has delegated to the Purchasing and Supply Services Director the ability to award and negotiate contracts and issue solicitations and purchase orders to obtain contract approval within accordance to the board requirements. So anything that falls in line, that is outside of the exceptions, those would actually be approved without coming to the board prior to the execution of those contracts. The Director of Purchasing also approves firm fixed contract modifications of four nine nine, nine 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 and below, and, and also contract modifications for nine nine, nine 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 point nine nine. That's a mouthful, but we also enforce the terms of the contract. And then we also seek for legal approval or legal weight in if there are any questions that we have about any contracts or how to move forward. So that is what the purchasing group and the purchasing director would do. That was a mouthful, but the next slide, we talk about the purchasing authorizations, the principles and the standards. So it talks about that the purchasing obligation, the purchase, to purchase, to purchase obligations, contract signature awards is limited to the following individuals. There is no other individuals that can commit or should commit the authority to any contract that is the Superintendent, the Chief Financial Officer, and the Director of Purchasing and Supply Services. It talks about like members of the board and district officials and employees of PGCPs are forbidding to solicit, accept, or receive directly or indirectly any way from any awardee or possible awardee by rebate, a gift, any type of monetary, uh-oh. Can you all hear me? Am I frozen? Okay, any monetary gifts, gratitude, favors, any type of value, promises, anything, any expensive gifts, all of those things are prohibited from individuals and employees because that does impede the, the procurement process. I'm going to go next to the, to the thresholds because these are kind of important thresholds. So anything that is under, I'm going to spare all of the, the nines, you all can see it. I'm on the next slide, Ms. Robin. Any five thousand dollars and, and below, those are informal small purchases and they require a verbal quote. And so usually it is a quote that we have and that we can go ahead and process those. Anything that is between five thousand and just under fifteen thousand, that is when you require one quote. We strongly encourage that we get a quote from an MBE. And those quote, that one quote needs to be attached to their requisition and it is turned into a purchase order. When you get into the fifteen thousand to just under fifty thousand dollars, that is when you, the competitive process starts where we need three written quotes. And the award would be made to the lowest quote that we have, that they have attached to their requisition. Anything that is fifty thousand and above, those are the ones that actually purchasing would actually initiate the procurement process. And I've thrown around some terms of, you know, IFB, which is Invitation for Bid, an RFP, or a rider request for quotes and task orders. So that is the level when it is fifty thousand dollars or above. The next graphic, it just talks about the procurement thresholds and their requirements. And the requirements and the thresholds are different when it comes to the instructional material, when it comes to professional services and the instructional staff. So you all can see how we have to remember a lot of rules of when the procurement process should be initiated and then what levels need to be approved by which different levels. Is it the board, is it, or the Director of Purchasing? So that's what that graph is there to show you all. And this next one, it just talks about our procurement process. We typically have a hundred and eighty days to do an RFP because we have to plan it. We're preparing it. We are actually issuing a solicitation. We are evaluating and we are awarding and then we are actually doing some of the, the, turning everything over to a PO so that we can do the funding and the payment of the solicitation in which we just awarded. So just wanted to kind of share with you all some of the things that we do. I know that you are in a time constraint because I could talk all day about these points and hear about what we do individually so that you all would know that we are just not rubber stamping anything and that we have a process and we go through it. But I, I just wanted to share the just top level with you all today. The next slide that we have is the procurement FY twenty-four process, I mean, snapshot. And I wanted to share, Ms. Robert, I'm on the next slide.
I said, I'm sorry, I'm not, Cindy, I think you have to move it.
Oh, Cindy, I'm sorry.
To this one, right, yes.
And so this is what we captured in FY twenty-four. And then it shows that we, the consultant agreements that we had, and it has the dollar amount of seventy-seven million dollars, talks about emergencies that we have, which is a very small number of emergencies, IFBs, we did forty, roughly forty million dollars of IFBs. And so an IFB is what you all would consider a PGCPs contract where we actually solicited and went through the entire procurement process that we just talked about or that we just seen in a previous slide and that we awarded a contract. Also, in RFP, we also did like fifty-six million dollars worth of RFPs. RFQs are maybe a couple of RFQs and they are either a request for quote or a request for qualification. But you can see that we do have a high number of riders that we actually issued riders for an FY twenty-four. And that is one of the things in which we're working on in FY twenty-five is to reduce the number of riders so that we can issue even more PGCPs, either IFBs or RFP contracts. When we talk about the awards by category, most of the awards that we've made, ninety-four percent are actually services, construction, even though that they have a very high dollar amount, they were four percent of the contracts. And then we also did two percent in goods. And so that is a quick snapshot of FY twenty-four. So this next slide that we have is the restricted purchases. And it talks about purchases that we're not, certain purchasers cannot buy without approvals. And that is your IT equipment, that is your transportation vehicles, building services, cleaning supplies. You had a lot of requests for cleaning supplies and furniture. And then human resources, which is travel, training, and temporary staffing. They actually go through a different process to actually procure the travel, the training, and also temporary staffing. I know that probably talked a little fast for you all, but now we're at the point where there are questions where I will slow down. So if there are any questions, you can ask them at this time. And if you need me to go back and repeat anything, I can do that as well.
Thank you so much, Ms. Johnson. And I just want to say to my colleagues that I'll, I'll recognize you in the order of your raised hand. Also keeping in mind that we do plan to end at seven o'clock. So it's a necessary question, but otherwise, if you think it's not, we can forego. Great, okay. I just wanted to leave a statement, maybe this is something you could just share as an email. But I was just curious, you know, when I think of procurement with like one of the largest majority African-American minority school districts, for sure in Maryland, perhaps in the nation, how many of those contracts are with minority-owned, women-owned businesses, small businesses, is I think it really speaks to our values. As they say, where you put your money is where it speaks to your values. So just maybe as a follow-up to that, it's just like how many of those contracts we actually have that are part of those different categories?
Okay, we out, we have a report that we are finalizing now that shows you the MBE numbers and how they, how they have transpired throughout the years. So you'll be, you'll be getting that report pretty soon. And so now, Robin, are we going into thirty-three twenty-five, I mean, thirty-three twenty-three? You're on mute.
Yes, we're going to go into the policy unless there are any other questions. Yep, then I guess we can go into the policy.
Okay.
Cindy, you might have to take it, I'm sorry.
Robin, do you think that Ms. Howe and Ms. Johnson need to be on for this? As if so, I want to make sure that they can have time back if this is now like a.
No, I would want them to be on because if we're going through it and there's any questions that, that you all may have, they, they're, they're the experts so they can answer the questions.
Right, got it.
So if you scroll down, Cindy, we, so interestingly enough, Chair Briggs, when you're talking about minorities and women-owned businesses, that is new language that was added to this policy so that we are addressing both minorities and women-owned businesses. And we put, I put that in the policy statement so that we have that also. And then if you scroll down a little bit further, Cindy, we, I also added that another purpose of this policy is to provide them the maximum feasible opportunity to certified local minority and women business enterprises to participate in the performance of PGCPs contracts for goods and services needed by PGCPs. So that was another purpose now of the, of the policy. And then if you keep scrolling down, let's see, these are just some definitions related to formal bids, just clearing up the language. And then if you keep scrolling, and I'm only pointing out the, the changes in the policy. So there, so then we have a whole section for the definition on what is minority business enterprise. And then you keep scrolling further. And now we're in the standards. So now the reason actually that this policy was, came up for revision was because in the twenty, it wasn't twenty-four, it's twenty-three. In twenty-twenty-three, in the legislative session, it built, the, the bill passed changing the threshold to fifty thousand, from fifty thousand to a hundred thousand. So right now, and this is for equipment, materials, services, or supplies. So right now, we are still operating under the fifty thousand threshold. But by, with this change in the, in the legislation, it would then be set up to a hundred thousand. So that would be the first major change. And then it just, it goes in and explains that. And then it doesn't show determine whether it's subject to minority. So there's again more additional language added to, to ensure that as they're looking at invitations for bids or requests for proposals, that they make sure proposal contracts are subject to minority when business enterprise program requirements also. Then proceed further. And these are just minor changes from CEO to Superintendent. Go back up for one second because I do want to, there's a request for, okay, this is, and, and Dan Erica, you might need to jump in there too. I'm going to clarify for them also, I don't think this was the location where we changed the language. This is, this is, oh, I know, this is talking about the fact that when we're looking at, when, when they're looking at RFPs, when RFPs come in, one of the things they're looking at is what, what is the highest rated technically acceptable proposal? And what this, that change in language is saying basically is that you do not have to go with the lowest cost item or service or whatever, if in fact you have a, someone who has put in a request and they act, a proposal in which their proposal demonstrates that they are much more highly rated technically. And so it would be that we maybe, even though we might have to pay a little bit more for that service or, or, or item or whatever, it is much to our benefit to have the more higher rated item than the other, than a lower rating one, just to get the lower price. And then if you scroll down further, all of, so all, anything that even when the, when the Director of Purchasing is, is signing off on contracts, anything below the threshold though, this is saying that they, they will, the Department of Purchasing is going to provide a report to the board, at least biannually, it says biannually, so that you as the board members will know which contracts have been signed off and what's been signed off, you know, what are we doing contractually? Even if it's below the procurement, the amount that you would be approving. And then this one goes into, it talks also about reporting non-construction contract modifications and anything, anything exceeding two hundred fifty thousand shall be reported to the board. And then the, I think this is related to expenditures of state Maryland or federal assistance or contract funds complying with the applicable state laws. Then if you continue forward, I, I, you have some more language about a minority business and women. Then we have instructional, stop right there a minute, Cindy. So instructional materials are supplies, the threshold was one million and now that this has been modified to say two million. So anything below two million, the Director of Purchasing would sign off, but anything above it would be signed off by the, by the board. And then our contract actions within this category would be reported to the board on a biannual basis. So that, even if you didn't sign, you still get informed so that, you know, transparency there, you know what's going on. And then if you scroll further down, keep going. I think there was another change of the, I'm sorry, go, go up for one second, please. All of it, again, this is same for this category, which is anything more than, what is the category? Can you scrub one second, Cindy? I missed it when you were going, keep going. Instructional and Staff Development Contracts and Services, so anything, anything above five hundred thousand, you would be approving, anything below, the Director would approve, would sign off on it. However, that you would be informed, you'd receive the report biannually. And then keep going further in the contract, down the policy, Cindy. Keep going. And then this goes to professional services, which is like at two hundred fifty thousand, the cutoff is. And again, the same idea, you, you, anything above, the board approves, anything below, the, the Director of Purchasing does. It's a go back up there for one second, we just missed something right in there, what's that say? Oh, and that has to do with the professional services, two hundred fifty thousand. And the other thing is, is that with all the contract actions, whether it's, whether it's a something that is a single contractor where, that we're actually bidding out and, and go forward with, or it's the riders, where we have a lot of riders where we. and 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 go forward with, or it's ri- the riders, where we have a lot of riders where we do ride on another contract with another systems uh contract or whatever, all that all that information also would be reported to the board on a biannual basis. So I think those are the big changes in this policy, because I think if you go down, yes, then we're in implementation.
Great, thanks so much, Mrs. Walsh. Uh colleagues, are there any questions about policy thirty three twenty? Um Board Chair Walker.
Um just a comment, I do appreciate the ads that have been brought in for additional clarity. And also, I do like the notion that the superintendent, there was an ad that the superintendent um can, based on technical aspects that might be a higher ranking, make a recommendation to the board with explanatory purposes and making sure that he has to explain that um for the board to then vote on. So I appreciate both of those and the other aspects. That's the only thing I was gonna add. Thanks so much.
Great, thank you, Board Chair Walker. Any other questions, colleagues? Okay, saw Dr. Miller shaking her head no. So um assuming that's the case. Um there being no objections to policy three thirty three twenty three purchasing, uh it will be recommended to the policy's sponsor for revision approval. The question is, shall the committee recommend policy thirty three twenty three to the policy sponsor for revision approval? Any discussion? Miss Adlet, please uh uh take a roll call vote. Great, there are three in the affirmative, there are zero in the negative. Policy thirty three twenty three purchasing will be recommended to the policy sponsor for revision approval. Uh I want to say thank you so much, um Ms. Howe and Ms. Johnson for your uh presentation. Um and we're always happy to welcome you. So if we have other opportunities, hopefully you're happy to join us. Um but thank you for making the time tonight. Okay, we're gonna move to um item four point O and policy enactment discussion. Um so colleagues, I propose a change in the time of our meetings. This change will begin this evening if possible. Uh this will allow us to accommodate all items on the agenda and be more proactive with our schedules. Um so the question is, shall the committee adjust the meeting from five to seven to five to seven thirty? Any discussion? Okay, Ms. Adlet, please take a roll call vote.
I do. Sorry, I couldn't get my hand up yet. I think I've um noted it to a number of members. I just um believe in two hour meetings. I know for this particular committee, particularly as legislative season is coming up, it probably behooves us to extend this timeframe. It's just really tough. And I think for fiscal responsibilities as well, we should take that into consideration um as well. When we have uh what I'm talking about is board um office staff, but I don't see any here actually. So it looks like maybe Cindy, now that you're in your new role, we actually don't need to pay overtime um for that. So we might not have those additional dollars as related to it.
Uh any other discussion? Okay, um Ms. Adlet, please uh take a roll call vote.
I know I make a quorum, y'all. I make I make the vote. Um yeah, I'm not in favor of this one, guys. Is it, I'm happy to do it for, what I am happy to do for an amendment is to say that we will do this throughout legislative season twenty twenty five. And then we can come back and take a look at it. I just think that we can do better at um making sure we can get through all the policies necessary.
Oh, I'm sorry, that well
Chair, and I was about to take your role, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, yeah, yeah, I was just gonna say, I think this is a, this is a protection mechanism. So it's like the 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 suggestion isn't that especially for like up until legislative season, most of our meetings probably will be two hours because we have fewer policies and we aren't gonna be in legislative season. But the 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 expectation is, if people see it now, then they're like, okay, great, I know that I'll be here at least into additional half an hour. Um and that really will help during legislative season. So this kind of is a vote for lead season, because as as Cindy showed in the work plan, we only have like two or three policies moving forward. So this is likely gonna be the only really meeting that we have that's longer. Um because we have the presentation, we won't be having presentations unless that comes up again, that we need that. Um so it's really gonna be getting to the policies and moving forward. So this vote is for legislative season.
If we say legislative season, that sounds great. I'm just nervous that when we also update the um um attendance policy, then we might be coming back anyway. So if we could just do it for a limited time, I think that that's great. And then put a note that we will come back as needed. Perfect. I will vote for that. So you can count me in if that is a friendly amendment that is taken.
So the question is
We had started already voting on this, so I'm wondering whether we should finish that vote and start a new and start a new question. So we voted down the first one and then start a new question, because I don't think you said legislative sea- season at the beginning. So I I'm just questioning, I don't know whether it's Mr. Farrar, who does the grant.
Oh, okay, I was just gonna say, I think that once the one, she she was the quorum. So once she said no, it didn't pass. Like that was the, it didn't pass. So now we are on the new question, because that one, that question was voted on and it didn't pass. Um but the new question will be, shall the committee adjust the meeting from five to seven to five to seven thirty during legislative season? Any discussion? Okay, Ms. Adlet, please take a roll call vote. Oh, okay, sorry about that. Um Dr. Miller.
I know I'm on my way out, but I just wanna put this um as a, as a, as a, as food for thought. I do agree with um Board Chair Walker that two hour meetings uh over two hours can be a lot. I wonder for this committee, many times even before as a part of this committee, we will go to seven thirty, eight o'clock at night. But that was because there was a lot of healthy discussion and as an educator, knowing how policies impact what happens on the day to day, I appreciated that healthy discussion because it just meant that we're giving a lot of thought to the policies. So would we consider doing fewer policies to ensure that we adhere to the two hours? And to also ensure that we're giving ourselves time and not, as we have been doing before, not rushing through them, really thinking through what an end or an all will mean um in a policy. So I just wanna put that out there for legislative season, I get it, we gotta get things done for legislative season. But moving forward, should we consider taking on fewer policies so that we can ensure that we're having a healthy discussion around those policy?
So, well, I saw Robin shaking her head and I want to make sure she has a chance to chime in here. But I just want to say this, because I think that the I I want to be clear in all board members and even stakeholders, understanding the implications of like, whatever decision we're making is gonna be like a a lose lose, really, right? If we do fewer policies, I think Ms. Adlet brought this up, like we had a whole initiative to do more policies because we have this backlog of policies that weren't updated. So that actually was a part of like, as we were thinking about the nine thousand series and all this stuff, other stuff, that's why so many on the list. So when we don't do that, then I guess we have to think about the consequence of how that impacts students, if there's an outdated policy or something, or our schools. Um which one are we willing to like, you know, toss up, right? So it's like, is that, and I think that's what we have to make it as a committee. Is like, what is, what 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 do we value more? But I think that's really what's on the table is like, if we don't do as many policies, then we'll have fewer that we're making decisions on that might be outdated or that might need to be, that might be in need of being updated, because we're doing fewer. Um and also that prioritization might be about what's popular right now, right? Cell phones might be taking over something else that we need to do. So it's gonna be competing priorities is the other piece. Um and just being clear about the unintended consequences of that, additional thirty minutes versus maybe other implications for our school system. Are there other que- discussion questions or?
Yeah, I'm sorry, let me put my hand up.
Dr. Miller, and then uh Board Chair Walker. You're muted, Dr. Miller. You're you're muted, Dr. Miller.
Since this is my second round, I let Board Chair Walker go first and then I'll go after.
Thank you, um I appreciate that. You know, I don't want to minimize the time, like thirty minutes seems like a little bit. But we all recognize that we put a lot into the Board of Education. It is extremely important, but we also have other priorities, other commitments, other boards that we also sit on. So I don't want to minimize like what thirty minutes means in a grand scheme of things. I think that what we have the opportunity to do is take a look back at our work plan and really prioritize to your earlier point of what we put on the docket and when. And we've had an opportunity to see that a little bit. So I think that as was noted earlier, we might be in a great space to be able to end in two hours, which is amazing. And then we give ourselves the opportunity during legislative season to be able to uh get that half an hour as needed. And as we get other policies in place, we don't know, attendance might affect committee meetings. And therefore, you might be penalized if you're not here. So we gotta make sure that we are balancing all the things as well. Just wanted to put that out there, that it's not so black and white, but we are all committed to furthering our scholars. We were all elected to be in this position. We're all on board.
Dr. Miller.
I'm piggybacking, I think um Board Chair kinda said what I wanted to say. And I I wanted to just implore or emphasize, I don't look at it as a lose lose. I believe that when we take time to really dissect and unpack these policies, to make sure that we're putting together the best policy that serves our students and our our teacher and school based staff or central office staff and our parents. Taking a lot of time to go through one policy is well worth. So whatever decision you make, whether it's an extra thirty minutes or fewer policies, whatever decision you make, because this is now on you all, decision you make, just ensure that you are not minimizing the time that you spend on each policy. That's all I'm saying. Just ensure that the amount of time that you've taken each time and really gotten, sometimes you've said we need some legal advice. Sometimes we've asked um Ms. Welch to go back and check on certain things or practices or bringing in speakers. Just ensure you're continuing the practice of taking the time, because this is a nuts and bolts of what's gonna run our system, basically.
Okay, uh Mrs. Walsh.
Um so I'm, I I realize I'm not a committee member, but I will, I have to agree with Dr. Miller. Um because I think like I spent tremendous amount of time on each one of these policies as I'm putting them together, trying to consider every possible unintended consequence and what it might mean. I I really try to think, try to be in your heads in terms of thinking what's really important to you, what you know, what are your priorities, what is as a board? And but that that's just me putting it together. So I feel like it's really critical that you all look at it with a critical eye. And you know, from your uh individual perspectives, to make sure it is exactly the way you want it as you move forward with it. So that that's, that's the only thing I would say.
Great, thank you so much. Alright, so we've had discussion on this. We all have our perspectives and we're gonna vote. Because we're voting on, again, the question is, shall the committee adjust the meeting time from five to seven to five to seven thirty during legislative season? Um Ms. Adlet, please take a roll call.
Mr. Briggs. Ms. Walker.
Okay, so the new committee time is now five to seven thirty during legislative season. We're gonna now move on to item four point O, um committee time change.
You know what we didn't do? I'm sorry, say when legislative season was. It's okay, I don't want to go back and do that, but um we might just want to note it. Or making sure that yours is the same as what I'm thinking.
Well, what we'll do is we'll put
For the public, so yeah, I was gonna say one to announce it now for the public, so we have it on record when it, when this will conclude.
So what we'll do is, we will update the work plan to include in there when legislative season is, and we'll bring that back to the board for a vote probably in December, because we're gonna miss it for next, this Thursday's meeting. Um unless there can be a quick turnaround and someone wants to do that. Okay, we're gonna move to item uh four point two, committee time change. Colleagues, I would like for the committee to recommend the following. Believe this is um actually uh something completely different, but um I would like the committee to recommend the following seven policies to the full board for immediate implementation. Policy zero one one three, service animals in schools, policy fifty one twenty five, student information record, policy zero one zero one, education equity, policy sixty one sixty one, core curriculum resources, policy zero one one six, wellness, nutrition and physical activity. Policy twenty eight zero one, safe and supportive schools, and policy fifty one twenty one, grading and reporting for elementary and secondary uh students. These policies, while enacted, won't go into effect until July one, two thousand twenty five, as indicated in the board policy ninety three forty, which states that policies and procedures that immediately impact students or staff will go into effect on July one, following their adoption unless otherwise approved by the board. Will put existing pow- procedures or state mandates in jeopardy. To avoid this and guarantee procedural consistency and uniformity across the district, uh we propose that the committee submit the aforementioned policies to the board for approval for prompt implementation. So instead of waiting until July one, two thousand twenty five, some of these need immediate implementation, and that's what we uh are suggesting. If there are no objections, the committee shall recommend the seven policies to the full board for immediate implementation. Okay, there being no objections, okay. Uh there be no objections, the seven policies will be recommended to the full board for immediate implementation. Um I do want to just be mindful of the time, because I know we still have quite a few things to get through and we are running against time. Um okay, so we're gonna move on to item four point three, policy possession and use of alcohol and drugs on school grounds. Um I recognize Mrs. Welsh for an overview of policy possession and use of alcohol and drugs on school grounds. Mrs. Walsh.
Yes, um Cindy, would you mind putting it up for me, please? So um this policy, um it's really um to make sure that we do not have um that no one, regardless of whether you are you um student, an employee of the system, a board member even, a um visitor, parent, you know, community member, whatever, that there's no possession or use of alcohol, tobacco or drugs on school property. Um and the main reason the policy statement is because we want to have a safe, healthy and productive learning environment for our students, employees and our visitors. Um as well as those numerous laws out there that basically say you cannot have alcohol, tobacco and drugs on the school, on school grounds. Um so the purpose of this policy is to provide those guidelines. Um I'm gonna just uh just basically, uh there's lots of definitions for you to look through. But this does apply to all individuals coming into the schools, to a school property or in school vehicles or at all school sponsored events. And um ultimately, when we talk about tobacco, we're also talking about things like um um vaping cigarettes. Um you, there's, I guess they're e-cigarettes or vaporizers. And then, of course, any type of drugs um that are like illegal drugs as well as um any kind of alcohol. So as set up, the policy is set up so that it breaks it out by students. And for students, of course, it prohibits, you know, the sale use or possession of tobacco products. Um and then alcohol and drugs. And then it talks about the fact the superintendent is gonna provide identification annually to students and parents about this policy. And the guidelines relate to it and that um that any student that is engaged in sale use, uh possession, um distribution, those types of things are going to be subject to the disciplinary actions related to the Student Rights and Responsibility Handbook. And then it also talks about that that our health, our comprehensive health education curriculum does provide planned learning experiences and opportunities for students to acquire functional health knowledge about the health risks related to hel- alcohol, tobacco and drug use. So they are receiving that in their, in their health education courses. And then on top of that, um it also talks about providing support to students who might have difficulty with with uh dealing with alcohol, tobacco and drug use. And so in terms of providing prevention intervention based uh counseling services for those for those students. And then for employees, um it's sort of very similar. It talks about the fact again, employees are not allowed to use or possess um drug, alcohol or tobacco uh within the school. And again, this would be the superintendent's responsible for communicating those standards to um out to the employees. And then the violation of this policy would subject the employee to disciplinary actions up to and including termination of employment. Um and this is in accordance with the Employee Code of Conduct. And then and also employees are not allowed, even if they didn't use the drugs likes or alcohol on school property, they still are not allowed to report to work under the influence or showing signs or use of drugs or al- alcohol. And then um the um there are, because of our employee assistance program, that we are to inform employees that the availability of this counseling service for them. And then in general, for visitors, any visitor using the um using the property, using, coming into um on the schools, on school grounds or whatever, or school activities, absolutely not allowed to possess, use or sell tobacco and uh other smoking products as well as they are not allowed to manufacture, distribute, distribute, dispense, possess with the intent to possessed with the intent to distribute a controlled substance on or within a thousand feet of PGCSB's property. Um, and um, um, let's see what else. And then the last thing is the use of alcohol, tobacco products and drugs in school buildings or in school grounds, even if the school isn't in session, but you are, let's say you signed up to use the facility, you absolutely are not allowed to have alcohol, tobacco and drugs. So it's basically a policy that's saying there will be no alcohol, tobacco products or drugs that usage, possession, distribution, uh selling whatever on school property, a school at school related activities and and school vehicles.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Welsh. Um, colleagues, are there any questions about the this policy, possession and use of alcohol and drugs on school grounds? Okay, I have a comment, Mrs. Welsh, um that I would just love for you to just add, so it's really quick. So this is for the students. I wanted to add in there, it says, um, any student engaged in the sale of, I mean, I wanted to add in purchase, sale of or purchase.
Okay.
That that's in that part. There's a piece that's uh around educators and like, you know, them offering curriculum or instructional things. So I wanted to just add in evidence based and research based interventions or smoking cessation and or drug prevention and education, however you wanna put that, but just being clear that it should be evidence based, research based. And then lastly, for the uh visitor section, this is D two specifically. Um, it says, um, I think we just need to put it there prohibited. Like it says it in the first line, it says in the third line, but it doesn't say in the second line, it doesn't say prohibited. So I just wanted to say that we should put that in there. So it's very clear, there's no loopholes for people to misinterpret.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So if there are no objections, the committee shall recommend the new policy to the policy sponsor for revision approval. Okay, there being no objections, the new policy will be recommended to this policy sponsor for revision approval. We're gonna move on to item four point four, policy developing curriculum documents for instructional programs in elementary, secondary schools. Recognize Mrs. Welsh for an overview of the new policy.
Um, so this is a new policy, um and it's um, it's very specific to the development of curriculum. And interestingly enough, we did not have a policy addressing curriculum. So um we headed about like addressing getting textbooks and the right types of resources, but not the actual curriculum. And that's probably the most important thing we have in terms, uh in addition to our teachers and teaching ability, but the actual curriculum of what we're teaching is really important. So this policy is talking about the fact that the board is committed to providing each student professional teaching staff with high quality curriculum that's aligned to relevant state, local and national standards, because it is generally, most frequently, it's the state that sets the standards for us and what we are supposed to teach and that um with and the, and the, and the idea that our curriculum is to work, we work to ensure students develop twenty first century competencies to succeed in college career and the community. So the um, there are several definitions in the, in the um this um policy, but as far as the standards themselves, first of all, I think it's um the whole idea that what's the, what's behind why you have written curriculum is to s- put out there for students, teachers, administrators, parents and community members, what it is you expect students to know and be able to do at the end of each grade level or at the end of a course. And that the curriculum should provide educators with clear, specific directions for instruction um and contain comprehensive scope and sequences. And that professional development should always be provided to prepare teachers to teach the written curriculum and use the methodologies to ensure that they have the appropriate knowledge and skills to teach effectively. And that there should be coordination between the central office leadership and school based staff to make sure that there is successful implementation of the curriculum. And that um the the curriculum meets the following uh um requirements. First of all, that it's aligned to the relevant local, state and national standards. It references recommended resources and materials for use during instruction, cause it's one thing to give teachers the curriculum, but if they don't know what resources um or materials they're supposed to be using, then um that is a pretty heavy burden to lift. And then it should reflect current evidence based research data and technological advancements that curriculum should within that disciplines and promote or congruence among written, taught and assessed content. And then include culturally responsive content and strategies. It should be well balanced and appropriate for all students to meet the needs of diverse learners and provide strategies for d- differentiation, instructional methodologies, pacing and resources for the diverse learners and students with disabilities, and then embed frequent evaluations of student learning. So that is about it in a nutshell. It's, it's, it's basically just your basic, what curriculum should have in it.
Great, thanks so much. Um, colleagues, any questions about um policy developing curriculum document for instructional programs in elementary and secondary schools? Dr. Miller.
I'm wondering if I missed this one, because I was looking, I don't remember seeing it and I could have missed it, so please forgive me. So um Ms. Welch, this is not talking about the resource materials, this is actually the curriculum that's developed by the division of CNI, right?
Yes.
Got it, okay. No questions, I just want to verify whether, what it was.
Okay, right. Alright, so if there are no objections, the committee shall recommend the new policy to the policy sponsor for revision approval. There being no objections, the new policy will be recommended to the policy sponsor for revision approval. Um, we're now gonna move on to um item four point six, policy fifty one sixty eight, automatic, automated external defibrillators. Um, and if there are no objections, Mrs. Welsh is only going to reference changes to this policy since it's been before the committee before.
Um, okay, so this policy actually was approved last November twenty three, so it's a very new policy. And it's broken into two sections, that's why it's called automated external defibrillators. Um, because there's a whole section on the public ac- access automated external defibrillator program, which I'm not gonna go into, but that's what we had previously. But then, within the policies, another section that talks about the venue specific emergency action plan. And when this was created, the, uh the had the venue specific emergency action plan, it was all focused on the use of the AEDs. So then we, we ended up having all this language about AEDs, but in the meantime, then legislation passed last um last year, the twenty twenty four legislative session, in which they also talked about the fact that um in the venue specific emergency action plan, there should also be a um a cardiac emergency response plan. So what's basically been added to this policy is the section related, and it comes directly from the law, was the section related to the um that they also talked about heat acclimation, acclimate, I can't even pronounce it, acclimateation or whatever. And also a first aid, like for um, you know, any kind of surgical cervical issues, concussions, those kinds of things. But the focus of this, based on the law, was related to the cardiac emergency response plan. And basically, it says you have to have someone to, uh, uh, the school staff identified who will play, will be uh on this sir, emergency response team. And we're supposed to be coordinating um this, the, the plan with first responders and local emergency medical services so that we're integrating our plans, so if there's need to call them, I mean, we can work very closely together. And then um also the uh procedures for activating the cardiac response team. You would have a team there of involved in inj- individuals um um that have been trained in CPR as well as AED, and they would be there as the team on the scene. And and it's all, this venue specific plan is all specific to um athletic events or athletic facilities. So that's when this, this particular plan goes into effect, is that like your, all your games, you know, or even at practices uh where you're talking about athletics. So that, that's basically it. It's, the big issue is putting in this cardiac emergency response plan.
Great, thank you so much, Mrs. Welsh. Um. Colleagues, if there are no objections, the committee shall recommend policy fifty one sixty eight to the policy sponsor for revision approval. There being no objections, policy fifty one sixty eight, automated external defibrillators will be recommended to the policy sponsor for revision approval. We're now gonna move on to item four point seven, policy eighty two sixty five, evaluating the superintendent of schools. Um, and uh we'll turn it over to Mrs. Welsh to provide an overview, but before that, I just wanna say if there are no objections, Mrs. Welsh is only going to mention the changes to this policy that we've already discussed.
So this is the evaluating superintendent schools. If you recall at the last meeting, we, we um uh actually, I think it was board member business draw that brought up the fact, well, what about the contract we have with the superintendent? Because it does talk about timeline and all those kinds of things. So I did get the contract and I read through it. And actually, um it also talks about the duties of which the superintendent would be evaluated on, among others, but still these duties within the contracts. So what I did is added a definition for duties and basically picked up the language that was in the um and um, and not every single one that was there, but the majority of them that were listed in the contract and then said, not limited to, but the anything that was in the contract. So that we know that when you're doing your evaluation, you would be looking at how well he has or she has performed those particular duties. And then um the, the other conversation had to do with, well, the contract, this particular contract says November. So the uh recommendation, uh last meeting was to start, say, keep it at June thirtieth, but say unless otherwise stipulated in the contract between the board and the superintendent. So that way, then in the instance we have right now with the current contract, it would be November. Um, because it's already stipulated in the contract for it to be November. And then the other thing was, is that even if you're not at the meeting, the, the conversation last time was that the board, every, each board member should be, provide the opportunity to provide input and complete a rating on the superintendent. That, and so I put that specifically in under F. I'm sorry, I keep talking and Cindy, you're not even I'm sorry, you're not moving forward. But anyway, if you keep going here, that was the change on the stipulation for the contract. And this is each, wait, go back, go back, go back, one second, they're right there. Each board member shout will be to provide the opportunity to provide input and complete a rating of the superintendent. And then the other conversation that came up with the, at the meeting was the fact though that um, the, we went and when it's, at the actual meeting, then the board, the executive session where you're now um, you know, you're having a conference with the superintendent and then you would sign off on the actual summit of the evaluation. And in that instance, only the board members present at the conference would be signing off because to be able to even do it, you'd have to have a quorum. And so, and that's all you really need to complete that evaluation. But every board member does get the opportunity to provide input when, and complete a rating of the superintendent. So that was, that's, those were the changes from the previous meeting.
Great, thank you so much, Mrs. Welsh. Um, I see board member, uh chair um of the board, uh Walker's hand.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Welsh, what we did was update the original form for board members to give input in advance. We updated that form to now, if you, when you check a box, you acknowledge that you are signing um the superintendent's evaluation. So I just wanted to let you know that that form has been updated, so it's not after, it's actually before. When you put in your feedback, there's like a, we can send it to you with the real verbiage says, but it's something to the effect of that you're aligned to um have your input um also tallied up with the collective board, and as a result, this is a superintendent's evaluation.
Okay, if you, if you wouldn't mind sending that, then I can, I correct that one little piece there.
Thank you so much. Um Cindy, can you um have Ravel send it over, would you mind? Thank you.
Yes, I have a good to know.
Right, any other questions or discussion? Okay, if there are no objections, the committee shall recommend policy eighty two sixty five to the policy sponsor for revision approval. There being no objections, policy eighty two sixty five, evaluating the superintendent of schools will be recommended to the policy sponsor for revision approval. Um, we're now gonna move on to item five point O, policies for second consideration. Um, there are six items for consideration. Policy uh uh evaluation of library materials, policy twenty five sixty six, student identification cards, policy fifty one thirteen, attendance, absence, intruency, policy fifty one forty three, bullying, harassment or intimidation, and policy sixty one fifty three, field trips. There are no objections, the committee shall recommend the policies under agenda item five point one through five point five to the full board for public comment consideration. There being no objection, the policies, your uh agenda items five point one through five point five will be recommended to the full board for public comment consideration. Okay, um, we're now gonna move on to item five point six, policy eighty one zero one, policy development. Um, I recognize Mrs. Welsh for an update on policy eighty one oh six, policy development.
So um, it just, in terms of this particular policy, there was um uh a, a change that I felt like I should bring to your attention. So the, when you voted today to move forward, I think it's what, five or six policies that were, that said they were uh supposed to be effective Ju- July twenty twenty five. Um, I actually had brought it forward to Chair Briggs saying, I'm a little concerned because a lot of these policies are policies, I think we really wanna be in, in effect now. Because like the service animals in schools, the uh wellness, nutrition, the uh uh safe and supportive schools, those kinds of things. So I, so because, so now you're gonna vote at the board meeting, the board will vote, then the full board to say this, we're gonna make them effective. So the language in the policy that ninety three forty said that automatically, it would always be July one of the following year that would go into effect when impacted students and staff. So I have changed that language. And if you would scroll up, Cindy, um, keep going, and I think you'll be able to see it. Um. Uh, okay, they keep going. Should be, keep going, that was the definition, keep going. Keep going. Uh, thank here. The data policy is implemented throughout, typically, immediately fought, would be typically, immediately following the board action, unless based on the implement, based on the implementation requirements impacting students or staff, the board determines that July one is more appropriate. So I put, so it's almost the reverse of what it said before. So what it would be saying, you would generally always move it forward so that it becomes effective. But certainly, if some of these policies don't, are enacted, say in April, May of that year, of the, of that year, uh you, it's, you're not gonna wanna put it in effect right then, you'd probably wanna wait. So it's more like looking at it and anytime that you feel that you should wait, you would vote to say July one versus automatically making it July one.
Great, I think this, this seems pretty straightforward. Are there any discussions about policy eighty one oh eight, policy development, the change that Mrs. Welsh just referenced?
And, and then I want other change that I want to point out. If you keep, if there's another section that talks about the, the superintendent with his administrative procedures. So um it basically says that there's, there's, the superintendent should not en- enact an administrative procedure unless tied directly to a board policy. This is on page six, Cindy, there. However, the superintendent has the authority to create an administrative procedure that is not tied to a board policy when the administrative procedure is a means to address legal and legislative compliance. So there are times when we don't necessarily need a policy, but we do need an administrative procedure. Like if you look at the, many of the audits that we have going on all the time, the thing they wanna look at is, what does your administrative procedure say? But it might be that there isn't necessarily a need for a policy to be addressing something. And we just, there was something, I can't remember what was coming up, but, but it was the idea that this is really just meeting a legal requirement. And yes, they would still be shared with you as the, uh, you know, to the board, but having that ability to do it, it just allows him, the system basically to be more functional uh when you are, when we're being, you know, mandated to do something.
Okay, okay, thank you so much for that, Mrs. Welsh. Any questions, again, any questions uh or comments about policy eighty one oh one, policy development? Okay, if there are no objections, the committee shall recommend policy eighty one oh one to the full board for public comment consideration. There being no objections, policy eighty one oh one, policy development will be recommended to the full board for public comment consideration. We're now gonna move on to item six point O, policies for third consideration. Uh, first reader, reader at committee level, um so policy eighty one zero two, officers. Policy ninety five hundred, reform governance, pay for performance is a rescission. Policy ninety two sixty five, procedure for uh to evaluate the superintendent is a rescission. There are three items for consideration, uh which will be considered as a consent agenda. These policies were distributed to the general public for comments and only receive comments rescinding policy ninety five hundred, reform governance, pay for performance. Uh, so I'll turn it over to Mrs. Welsh to really quickly provide an overview of the public comment response received to policy ninety five hundred.
Um, and I, I really apologize, I really apologize because I actually um oh, I know what you want. This has to do with the um, the pay for performance. So the comment, uh, it looks like that they were, yes, thank you for making it bigger, was this discussion about the incentives for teachers to enhance student performance. Um, um, but the thing is, is, and it says that they're, they're saying, I think in some way, in agreement, we must be extremely inten- intentional and diligent, so we don't inadvertently create detrimental incentive schemes. Students learn, express their learning in a variety of ways. So um the, I think this person was actually talking more specifically about the negativity of it, cause I'm looking, in two thousand eleven, there was such an incident that came to light when teachers were incentivized to increase student achievement, which translated them to feeling pressured to adjust student test scores um uh because of their pay was based on performance. So I'm thinking this person is actually saying they're in agreement with us um terminating or it's um rescinding that particular policy. Um.
Yep.
So.
Great, well, um, and I just wanna say, and it's a great point, and I think it was Atlanta Public Schools that had that incident um where there were a few uh administrative. Uh, administrative people that were arrested or were charged for schemes around testing. So I, I definitely think that's a good point. Um, colleagues, are there any, any comments on this particular policy? Policy ninety-five, hundred, okay. There are no objections, the committee shall recommend the policies under agenda items six point one through six point three to the full board for first consideration. There being no objections, the policies under agenda items six point one through six point three will be recommended to the full board for first consideration. Uh, and I wanna turn it really quickly to Dr. Miller.
I'm sorry, I missed it, when you said, are there any questions? This was on the pay for, for, pay, pay for, for performance. So, understanding that the teacher who was recommending that we should not put that forward, is that my, my understanding?
So, um, they're agreeing, as Mrs. Welsh said, like, we're rescinding the policy, and they're agreeing that they don't want that, so they're saying exactly what we're doing. Yeah. All right, so now we're gonna move on to closing, uh, from the chair. Um, the next virtual policy and governance committee meeting will be on December tenth, two thousand twenty-four. Please continue to check the policy, uh, the, the Prince George's County Board of Education webpage for meeting information updates. I again wanna apologize to anyone who is with us, um, if you were waiting, we appreciate it. Um, we will definitely work diligently to be on time, um, when we start, and to end on time, too, for board members who have things to do. Um, so there being no further business, thank you all for the great discussions and attendance. The time is now seven oh three PM, the November twelfth, two thousand twenty-four policy and governance committee meeting is adjourned.
Thank you so much, colleagues, have a great night.
Take care, you all.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
All right, take care, Mr. Ver.